All right. Good evening, I would like to call the Tuesday, March 7th, 2023 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I don't have any announcements this evening. Is there anybody here for anything that is not currently listed on our agenda? Seeing as none, I will go right into our first agenda item with the public hearing for the poll petition area of 11 Manchog Street and possible votes. Do you want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the poll petition is to install one J.O. Poll on Manchog Street, installing new Poll 14-50 approximately 71 feet south of existing Poll 15 and in line with Polls 15 and 14 to eliminate a tree guy on property of 11 Manchog Street at the request of the town. And I see we have no issues with the Highway Superintendent or Tree Warden or the Police Department. And Conservation questioned the distance from the wetlands, the GIS map. The distance included in the packet looks to be approximately 25 feet. And assuming your mic from National, Brad?
I am.
How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So, yeah, it was requested by the town to remove a tree guy at House 11 of Manchog Street. And while I was out there, I noticed that their service wire was an A.L. trespass over their neighbors 13, so this is just to correct it since they have a narrow street opening there for the driveway.
And my concerns on the wetlands, less than 25 feet of wetlands.
That was my estimate based off the Douglas GIS maps.
Anybody from Conservation here?
Chairman, I believe that information was passed on to Steve Ziss, the distance. He never replied to the email. I don't know if he did it with him separately.
Nope, that was all I heard.
So do we take that as no news, as good news? So I would assume if there was a concern, Mr. Ziss, would you post something in writing or at least get back to us knowing there's a poll petition?
How many feet does it need to be?
There's no oil going on the poll itself, so it's just the oil that's in the poll itself. But usually within the public right, it's usually excluded most likely from that. You may have to do hay bales or something if environmental needs it, but usually it's not. Unless we're putting an oil-filled tank on the poll, which we're not, Mr. Ziss.
Anybody have any questions or comments or concerns? Anybody up for a motion on this?
Move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 I move that we approve the poll petition as presented to the board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Getting good at those poll petitions again. Item number two, ARPA discussion and possible votes. It would be a vote on the school security from the 11722 Executive Session. And then joint meeting with Water Commissioners regarding water sewer projects and possible votes. Do we have anybody here from Water Sewer?
They appear that were supposed to be. They are gendered up as well, yes.
I wonder if they're in another part of the building?
I'll go look. Think I know what they look like.
They're having a meeting tonight, I think, because Sarah was gonna video it.
Yeah, they might be.
Elsewhere.
Do we need to be room?
All right. Do we want to keep asking on it? Go back to it?
Yeah.
Why don't you do the school security vote?
Yeah, we can do the school security. Do we have something that we?
Where did he end up?
It's in the selectmen's minutes.
Yeah.
It's, it's in these minutes.
It's not the 1725.
Well, it was only 225.
Yeah. Sounds right.
$225?
$225,000.
Yes.
I knew it was in there.
Missing a few zeros.
Right. Catch that for the minute review.
Yeah.
Well, we just give them $225,000, you can say.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, the details of the proposal we'll discuss in Executive Session under the proper exemption for building security. Nothing has changed, so the request is for $225,000 of ARPA funds.
We'd make a motion to encumber $225,000 of ARPA funds.
I like that.
The term that he used in pass.
But, uh...
I like it. Anybody care to second?
Second.
Okay. So the motion was made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 I recuse myself on the next one.
Okay, so we'll come back to the Water Sewer Commissioners. We have the discussion, discussion with the Open Space Committee and Board of Selectmen vote on chapters.
They said they're on their way.
They're on their way? This Mike just recused himself. Do we need to pull Mike back in?
No, did you get voted on the 225?
Yeah, we voted the 225. So no, they're not on their way, Bob.
They have a meeting at the treatment plant. I just talked to Bob Sullivan, they're driving as we're coming.
Well, we'll ask them to pause for a couple of minutes and we'll go over the...
So they're going with the flow.
So they're late for their doctor's appointment, the doctor should take the next appointment.
That's what we're doing.
And treat the patient.
Moving on. If there is a vacancy for the patient later, we'll be happy to see them. All right, so we have a discussion with the Open Space Committee and Board of Selectmen vote on Chapter 61B for Walnut Street. And I believe we have the folks from the Open Space Committee. How are you?
So while they're getting seated, Mr. Chairman, the Community Development Director is on the VIA space.
Okay. What a great platform that is.
We are creditor, I got all the paperwork.
Yeah, that's great. I got one too that says your stock option plan is worth nothing now, enjoy.
Good evening.
Good night.
Good evening, Mr. Benoit.
To explain the reasoning why we think we should purchase a piece of property on Walnut Street.
So just a quick point of order, is this an official meeting for you guys?
No.
It's not? And there's more than two of you at the, is there more than two members of the Open Space Committee here?
Yep. We could, you know, pack it down, I mean, they could be seated.
Yeah, no, I know, and I'm fully, I'm not...
No, that's fine, if we can, if we need to lose a few in order to make it legal, that's all right. I'll go. We can all go. Yeah.
You wouldn't want it to be challenged, any action they would take, so...
I can all hit ya.
To pick up him.
All right, I was gonna introduce you. Can we switch back and forth after I've presented certain things?
That might be considered a rolling forum, I think the two of you should.
A rolling, yeah, just, just keep the two of us, okay? Yeah. All right.
Floor is yours.
All right, I'd like to introduce you to the Open Space Committee, but for right now, it's Becky Calliger, and she's President of Bay State Trail Riders, and we have a member, Lisa, who's, you know, President of the Medicom Atlanta Trust. So we have interest in the outdoors and trails and, and so we see open space as an investment for the town, because actually, open space is cheaper to maintain than a house with kids and schooling and trash and everything else, so. But we also, you know, see that the town, you know, we don't want to take away from, we are not targeting economic development areas. We're targeting, you know, neighborhoods with a pocket of, in this case, a pocket of 28 acres of conservation land in the middle. And it only has one access point, although people do come up Thomas Circle or whatever that's undeveloped area. I've seen people walk up there with their dogs to access this property. So, and there's 27 house lots there in Thomas Circle that are undeveloped. So between, you know, Walnut Street, Jefferson Drive, South Street, Chestnut Street, there's very little access to this property unless it's in your backyard, beyond your backyard. So that's why we think it would be nice to open it up to people who, you know, may are used to walking their dogs on the street in the old days, but now, you know, you just can't do that safely in town anymore. So it's not, it's important to have open, because it is an attractive town and it is filling in, you know, with people, and we need to be proactive. Also, the Greenway that it would create would be good for critters and not just people. And with global warming, it's, it's right along the river, Tinkerville Brook runs through this particular property. And I noticed perusing, getting ready for this meeting, that this particular property, I don't know if anybody's been down there, but it, it has the driveway going across another piece of property that is in 61A at the moment. So in a way, this is all ridiculous meeting. So I don't, I can show you the maps, you know, you've got them yourselves, I'm sure, that show that this particular lot, I can pass it or whatever.
We have a plan that they submitted to get, they want to take Lot Number One out of Chapter 61, but they have on this plan an easement that they want to put on Lot Number Two to get to Lot Number One. They're not asking right now to pull out Lot Number Two from Chapter 61, so I'm not sure of the legalities of that, with that being under Chapter 61 and trying to do that. I was looking at that with my tooth going last night, and I'm like, this is not right.
And it's, you know, it's, there's four lots for sale along there. And so that's particular one there, you know, and in the last sentence of the whole packet mentions something about Lot Two, that if maybe, was it that if they didn't want Lot, I have it right here. Yep. If buyer fails to accept the terms, makes a counter offer, or rejects the terms of the then seller, shall have no further obligation to buy the buyer with regard to Lot Two. Oh, I see, okay.
Right of first refusal.
So it's, you know, you need to take Lot Two out of 61, I would think, in order to complete this, this thing. But, and, you know, maybe it's, the plan is, to me, off as far as, like, if they moved everything down a couple of feet, they probably would be, you know, fine, it's just, there's, they still have land on both sides available. So I don't know why they picked these four lots or the, picked the layout that they did, but, you know, we, we see that, you know, it'd be nice, since it is a river going through this lot, that it would be nice to take that for the town and provide access to perhaps 100 houses for walking their dog or just seeing nature and staying off the streets. So what else do I have here?
So Matt, under the 61A, if the town were to choose to exercise its option, I'm assuming we'd have to purchase the land from the owner, right?
Right.
And I would assume that would be a fair market value?
It's $124,900, I think. And, but there's, you know, there's also land trusts and things like that that we could work on approaching.
Is it listed for sale though, is there an agent?
There's a sign up front.
Okay. Which agency is it?
Lisa Shaw E.R., Execu- Realty. I think I threw her number out today.
There's a possibility of that piece of property also to make a parking lot for a trailhead. And I took, I went after our meeting yesterday, I spent a couple hours, branched into the woods along that brook, and there is high, enough high ground on the street side to put in a really nice trail that would go from Chestnut Street to Walnut. People in the neighborhood to enjoy. Trails are an asset that offers a different experience for a wide diversity of people.
That's why a lot of people live here, you know? And I think a lot of people put their land in 61, which, you know, the way they take it out is very irritating to us to have to go through two acre after two acre lot sometimes, but a lot of times, you know, they do that just as, like a savings account for the future as being able to sell off a piece and have a little extra money when they need it. But at the same time, it's also because they love the land and they probably would be often happy to see it saved from development.
And what was the size of this lot again?
Two acres.
Two acres.
The survey that we had to do for this Open Space and Recreation Plan, what should Douglas's priorities be for open space recreation expenditures? Number one, improving passive recreation opportunities, trails on existing conservation land. Number two, acquiring conservation lands for new passive recreational use. And three, improving expanding wildlife habitat and corridors. And the question to, the answers to the biggest unmet recreation needs in Douglas, number one is multi-use recreational trails. So this is town residents speaking.
We took a survey, we've been working on the Open Space and Recreation Plan for a year now, and just sent it in to be approved, probably rejected for the first round they plan on. But, you know, this is what the information that we come up with.
And the last question, how important is it to be able to travel to open space and recreational destinations in Douglas by? And the number one response is extremely important is walking. So people want access to trails in, within walking distance in their neighborhoods.
Matt, do we need a formal offer or purchase and sale agreement to know, to act on?
So 61A has its own distinct process. The town has a period of time in which it would have to tender an offer. Now, for the fact that it's listed, I think that it might, it might absolve you of having to do your own appraisal if you accept the price. But I, this is far afield from anything I'm well schooled in, so I would want Rich Bowen to comment. The process started when, so what day, how far deep are we, it's 120 days?
When was the first letter?
The clock doesn't start until we get notice.
Right.
So it could have been there for a while, but...
Because I had to go back to them because they had it listed on, they had the whole property listed to come out.
Yeah, because you wrote them a letter February 7.
Right, the first.
And 61B.
The person who failed did not match the letter of intent, so it had to go back. It was received. Second submission on December 12, but the first one, I believe, starts the fall, which would bring it to March 18.
Is the owner indifferent whether the town buys it or a developer buys it? Or is he?
We can ask, Matt?
Yeah. Can you comment on that, Matt?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I was actually looking up the listing to see if there were any offers on the property. Do you mind repeating the question, please?
Yeah, there's a deposit on it.
Yeah, is the owner of the prop be interested in going to the town or the developer indifferent as long as he gets his fair market value? Do you know?
I am unfortunately, through the chair, I do not know the answer to that question. I can't tell you that this has been listed live for 123 days.
Yeah.
I was just reaching out to the agent to see if they had any offers in hand, but it does state in their listing that they're, that the land still needs to be taken out of 61B once a purchase and sale is executed. That has been on the market for a long time, but that's not uncommon for land with, without, you know, building permits attached to it or anything like that, so I find this to be kind of common, so it's one big...
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Matt, what is the impact on the A&R approval if this lot were to be bought by the town?
I believe that would change. The A&R is just for lot division, right, to change the property lines with uncommon ownership of a property. They create for individual lots based on the minimum requirements within the zone, lot size, lot frontage, and the board has to determine whether or not the road is passable. And that determination's been made. I heard a document came up on the Lot Two, thought I heard that was mentioned. Those documents still need to be drafted by attorneys and all that stuff, but that does not impact the A&R. The A&R would forward it legally as it, as it should.
I guess my, I'm gonna rephrase my question. If this lot were owned by the town, what impact would it have on the developability of the other lots?
None. As, as far as economically, I don't know if they need the money for that matter, but just, nothing else would change. We would own Lot One, and the other three lots would still remain in 61B and have to come out if they were sold separately. And the town would have their first right.
What about the possible funding source you mentioned, a land trust or a nonprofit potentially?
Well, we, this open space plan is gonna be able to, you know, we're gonna be able to get grants and stuff like that in the future. At this point, yeah, I mean, we could approach Medicom Atlanta Trust or any others, see if they were interested.
But if we commit to buy it, we are on the hook to come up with the money at some point, that's...
Right.
Then that would be a town meeting issue.
Yeah.
All right. Did the letter get sent out to tell them that they didn't?
It did not. I talked to town council after the meeting, he said that was not necessary.
Oh, really?
But I did make verbal contact with the owner. Just to make her aware what was going on, that it was being, another discussion was gonna be happening.
I was on my phone trying to find if there's any special features of Tinkerville Brook, whether it was trout waters or anything else. It doesn't appear to be. Are there any other unique characteristics to the lot above and beyond what its location and what it means?
Right, no, just the brook.
It is listed under, natural wildlife habitat under Biomec 3.
Right. But, yeah, it's critical natural landscape on the Biomec. And it's, you know, I mean, it, who knows what's gonna happen across the street? There's, you know, a lot of land over there as well for sale from the same owner. And that all abuts the Beagle Club, and then that abuts the state land and the trunk line to be snipped. So it could possibly be, you know, if we could get a trail through, over, around the Beagle Club and over to the, you know, Snit, it would be a great little connection for animals and people and, who knows what. So, I mean, we just, we're trying to be proactive in, you know, because it just, it goes quick. And it's, it's more valuable as with conservation land, but in conservation land is a great selling point.
We have most people that have moved out here because they like the rural character of the place.
Question is the funding source. I think if you go to town meeting, somebody's gonna say, you've got 25% of the towns in the state forest. I'm sympathetic to what you're asking, the question is if you had the money in hand from a nonprofit organization or whatever, otherwise it's gonna be appropriation from the, from the town, town meeting.
Yeah.
Requires a warrant article, yeah.
Is there time for that, town meeting?
The warrant is open.
Yes.
So we have a given period of time on the 61A to act, so I don't know if you can delay it till you get town meeting approval, how that...
If it was something that we wanted to entertain, couldn't you put it, you know, contingent upon raising appropriation of funding in a PNS?
It's legal counsel to tell us if we can, can hold it up. Obviously, the owner probably wants to, to know it's a done deal, but yet, they actually, they don't have a, do they have a buyer or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, okay, that's right, yeah.
And I think it's a builder. It's the beginning of two first names, you know, like Rod Joe or something.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. In addition to being your Community Development Director, I'm also a Realtor, so I have access to the municipal system. And it's still listed as an active listing. Whether or not they have a deposit could, could still be the case, but right now it's still listed as active, so anyone is still able to submit offers at this time. Usually if they have something written or an agreement, they would put it under as contingent, but that's not the case right now.
I did call the Realtor and she told me there was a deposit.
She said they did have a deposit.
Did you say you were calling from the town?
No, I didn't. I called about the one...
Sometimes the answer's different.
Yeah, I called about the one on the Webster line too, when I saw the sign go up yesterday. And I didn't tell them who I was.
You thought, Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
What's the outside date, Matt, that we have to, to make a decision on this?
March 17. I said 18, but it's the 17.
Could I call up someone from the Medicom Atlanta Trust to talk about the possibility of that, not as a open space person, but...
I just want the point of information, it's 120 days, I believe that goes to April, mid-April.
The original submission came in on December 12, I'm sorry, November.
That's the original, that's not the...
But that was wrong, so...
It is, but that's when we received it. And then I sent it back to them.
It has to be correct before the clock starts.
I think that's true, it was defective notice, so, when did you get the second?
So December 12. So that does bring it to you.
April 12.
So I'd like to see this maybe go to another meeting, give you a chance to talk to some funding sources potentially, and then we have, have a chance to talk with, ask legal counsel. So we get that put together and you see what you come up with. I don't know if the other members are sympathetic there.
Sympathetic, certainly. Cognizant of the financial situation of our town and the budget process that we're now undergoing. But if there's time to do our due diligence and take a deeper look at it, explore some options, I don't see the harm in visiting it.
That for the first meeting in April.
No, because if you need a warrant article, you should put it down for March 21. No, because if you need a warrant article, you should put it down for March 21st.
All right.
Is it putting you on the spot to ask you to talk about the land trust, whether they have any interest or not?
No, I just wanna make sure I'm not.
No, are you comfortable being able to say what they thought, because it would be helpful?
So Lisa Mosinski, I'm also president of the Metacomit Land Trust, so thank you for having us tonight. As you might know, the Board of Selectmen can also assign your right of first refusal to a qualified conservation organization, which is also a land trust, or possibly the Blackstone Valley Watershed Association or another conservation entity. Because this is backed up to town property, it would be best if the town took it, because then you wouldn't have multiple entities to deal with and making trails and things like that, but I'd be happy to go to the board next week and see if there are any resources that we could offer to share or to help out with if you wanted to move forward with this purchase. I just want to clarify that you have to meet the terms of the P and S, and it's not any other price at this point. And Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you basically have to do that, once you've exercised your right, then you have to meet the terms. So you do have that 120 days to do that.
So you're saying you don't have to specify a price until the purchase and sale comes in from another party?
No, I'm sorry, you have a purchase and sale attached to this.
Okay, yeah, okay.
That makes it a valid, so a valid offer. What happened is it came in and Lisa noticed thankfully that it was incorrect. No conservation, but it was, they listed two different acreages. And so she went back and they corrected it, it was only the two acre, 2.07 acre lot. And so when it came back, that's when it became a valid offer, because it has to have a P and S attached to it. So you have those parameters already there, and then the decision is, can you meet those parameters? I don't know how many years ago now, if any of you remember, there was a willing seller in, off of Northwest, Northwest Main Street, and we decided to exercise our right for that property, because we had frontage lots on Northwest Main Street that could be sold to offset the price that was being asked. And we went to town meeting for that acquisition. Miraculously, in the middle of January, we passed it and took the property, so that was a willing seller.
Sold the lots at the street.
Sold some of those frontage lots. So this is not a case where you would do that, but as Becky and Sue said, we've worked hard on an open space committee, open space and recreation plan that would allow grants to be developed, and your point system, when you apply to the state, goes up because you have that on file and you've done that work. That is in the near future. We can't apply that for this if we have to act relatively soon, but like I said, I'm happy to go back to Metacomit and see what we could help with.
So would you put a reserve, an article, Matt?
Yeah, we can put a place for it, that's easy enough. May I ask a question?
Yes.
Just theoretically, not, I don't know what the parameters are, I don't know where the limits are, but if there is a limited amount of money that the town had for purchasing open space, would this property be a priority or would there be others? In other words, this may be an opportunity that strikes right now, but is there an opportunity cost for a higher priority property if it came available in the near future and we only had so much money?
So you want me?
Not that we know of, you know. I mean, we're, you know, we have, we see all these land that's open and whatever, but it's not for sale or, I mean, we could approach people, but we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Well, with that and the generational changes and things like that, there's no crystal ball.
But there's nothing on your agenda right now saying this is a top priority?
No.
This might be, might be the one.
That's actually part of our open, the open space plan that we're doing is to make, come up with a priority list. We're in the process.
Yep.
It's all in the process.
There is another piece of land that Kathy found over, and it's the strip right next to a strip of owner unknown over, off of Perry Street. And that's, but it's $700,000, you said? So we're avoiding.
Yeah.
If you want to know, we'll pick the cheaper one.
Mr. Chairman, another question, and Miss Maybe for Matt. If the existing town property was put together with this piece, and then how much could go to conservation from Thomas Circle if the existing plan were built?
Thomas Circle Open Space is. Buying up now. Hit the field card. The Thomas Circle Open Space is approximately 33 acres plus the 28 acres involved here. Gets you to about 60 acres, you add the two acres for the parcel of discussion, you're looking at about 63 acres.
So it's the opportunity to put that together. I think that's the conversation, isn't just buying or not buying two acres.
Crossover.
It's what it could potentially become. Assuming that nobody wants to go through the subdivision process again, is there, is there a roadway built at Thomas Circle? There is, right? No?
Yes, yep.
Through the chair to town administrator. Yes, the roadway is built, there is frontage of that parcel on Thomas Circle, but that's still in private ownership until it's transferred to the town, and since there is no active development, there is no reason for us to believe that that could happen unless somebody purchases it.
I guess my point though is that now the road is built, it's unlikely that the lots and the resulting conservation land would be changed. Somebody's gone through the trouble of building the road, so it's gonna, the layout is gonna be the layout.
I believe so.
I mean, it's fair, it's conjecture, but it's fair.
If I could just show you this map. So this yellow parcel is the town already owns, and there's a small access to Chestnut Street. So the parcel we're discussing tonight would then make that linkage to Walnut Street. So along the brook, you could basically build, make trails and have an actual connector, which means we're building on top of this already owned town property. And if there's more at Thomas Circle, that would be terrific.
So I'm gonna make everybody's head hurt, Mr. Chairman, but the town had taken some lots on Chestnut Street for tax and attempted to sell them at auction, I believe, and none of them did because they were all wet. Any of them close to this?
Yeah, they are, I have it on the map here.
They were like 88.2 and maybe, there was a decimal point in there, they had been subdivided, but never.
Yeah, these, I thought they had been optioned off, but those are the lots that they've tried to get rid of, and this is the conservation land, and this is the property.
So there'd be a thin strip. Who's this?
That's us, and then that's the strip.
Now, who's this? Jigsaw, close the person down, do we know?
Oh, that's a private.
That's a spectacular planning board special right there. Sorry. I'm just, I'll have to check with the treasurer on what the final disposition was. Because a lot of times they get sold at auction, but we don't end up losing the transaction.
See, there's like a little strip.
Because they go out and they do investigation and they flag wetlands, they decide they want to keep building, or they hold it.
Is this what you're talking about, Thomas Circle, this piece right here?
Yeah, but they're saying if these three were optioned off and no one wanted them, then the town owns these three as well perhaps, but who owns this piece that it would?
It's all, it's all shaded. That's not Thomas Circle, this must be.
Like the gel pen.
This must be in this outside land. All right, well now we're talking about stuff that people can't see.
Yeah, it's an odd, awful question, but would the state be interested in this at all?
So I don't want to speak on their behalf, but their priorities in the past several years have been to add to, so it's contiguous to their holdings, and they have no holdings out here.
Maybe fishing game, since it's a nice stream.
With this, with this parcel tie-in, then you say, I think you met with some other land that didn't sell.
There's a, so what I was, we were having our sidebar conversation, there's a very strange shaped lot that kind of wraps around the three that the town had taken for tax. And it's the thinnest of strips, it can't be much more than 25 feet wide. Tie-balling the scale.
Get a bridge.
Well, because I don't know who owns it and why they would want to hold on to it unless there's some on Chestnut Street that they're gaining by that odd shape that allowed them to build something in the back.
Yeah, we can check on that.
Yeah, it looks like there's like a little driveway and, you know, stuff like that into there, and two lots together maybe.
So I think we should put this off to the next meeting and look at what you can come up with.
And then we can get our questions answered through town council.
Yeah.
So we can reconvene on this in our next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for persevering.
We shall. Now we can get the sewer people here in the water.
It's appropriate.
We're fed fair.
All right. So we have our.
Have a good night.
Good night. We have our joint meeting with the Water and Sewer Commissioners regarding the water sewer project. I'll pick a chair, I get the big chair.
How are you guys?
Hi, Hal.
Looks like it's fest night.
What? Fest night?
Fest night.
We didn't get the memo.
How are you, Matt?
Very well, yourself?
Good.
Eight o'clock, Coca-Cola?
Hardcore, yeah. All right, $1.6 million sitting in our pockets.
We have to make a motion to reconvene our meeting.
So moved.
You had $1.6 million, what do you do?
Run.
Try to parlay it. Do you share any with us or?
Supposedly, you gotta run with it.
All right, cool.
So how do you want to?
That was a fair question.
That was the question of the day.
Well, I know there's been some discussion on what, why you want to get them.
Yeah, so like I said, we proposed several different projects when the request came out for proposals. One of them we took off after doing further evaluation, the sewer lining project, so we're glad that we don't need to spend that much money doing that project. The key project that I looked at was the main street water, as I've said before, that's kind of the main artery for the water system. A lot of additional funding would have to be applied in order to make that project come true. Another project was the sewer project going up to, you know, in the past, how many of the board members were here, back when, when it was requested that we get sewer up to the gazebo. I think it was, we want a flush toilet at the gazebo, but, so that's been something that the town had looked for in the past and was pushing for, but when we went through all the numbers and looked at all the potential opportunities, like a hundred year payback if we were to install sewer going up there, so being an enterprise fund, it wasn't a sound business decision for us to move forward with the sewer, so that's another possibility of a project for that. And then there was the Depot Street project, upgrading this water main. And anytime we have issues down on Main Street, or somebody flushes hydrants, or hydroseeder gets on a hydrant, or the mill or one of those projects opens up a fire hydrant, we end up stirring up water here, because this, this line, it's an old cast iron line, so there's tuberculosis in the pipe, so anytime you get a good rush of water going by, it stirs it up, and with the tuberculosis line, it also decreases your fire protection coming down this line. So if we put a new duct line, cement line pipe in, that would eliminate the dirty water issues and it would increase fire flows and just make for a better system altogether, so. So those were the three projects that we looked at and proposed. I've met with the board before to discuss them, so like we discussed at the last meeting, we'd like to have the commissioners weigh in on the, weigh in on the topic and give their opinion on the projects.
Long story short, we kicked it back to you guys.
Yeah. Okay.
Correct, and that would fix yet another issue of Martin Road being along Dead End Road with old pipe as well.
That's north of 1.6 mil?
Yes. Rough ballpark was around two, a little over 2 million. I haven't got the engineer's estimate on it, we haven't done any design work on it, so we would have to go through that design process and get an engineer's estimate, but the market's been so volatile with the delays in pipe and, you know, I mean, as Matt's well aware, trying to negotiate getting pipe in the past was a roller coaster and there's no clear, you know, like, when we did the cemetery project, I think we paid like $22 a foot for pipe. When we put it out the bid, it was 54, and then halfway through that project, they were looking for $104 a foot, so the prices have gone crazy and it's, people are, people are paying it because there's funding out there and there's just not enough pipe, so everybody's outbidding each other.
So 1.6 million to buy us a pipe?
Yeah. So like I said, that was an original estimate, I haven't got any engineering design estimates yet, but I would still say it would appear to be a fairly decent number, so.
Question, how would you fund the short term? You're about $4,000, short of your target.
Right, so like I said, until we, until we went out the bid, we won't know what it comes in at. If it's only, you know, if it came in at 2, or 1.8, then we could potentially fund it through retained earnings. If it comes out over 2 million, we'd probably be looking at a borrow.
I think the other, the other thought process I love is if you, if you go up to Depot Street and, excuse me, when you come to the rail bed, right there, there's a right away that goes through there to the G keep property. I was talking to Wal, there was a shortfall on the.
There are a few locations, here are their business hours for today.
Obstacles getting through from there to over Maple Road, Maple Street, that we could maybe do two phases of it and see how the bids come in for that, and then we'll just utilize that money and get up to that point and then address the shortfall.
Part of that is due to, you know, with the ARMA funds, you don't need to go to town meetings to finance the project. If we have to, if we have to borrow money, we would have to go to town meetings, so that would be another step of the process if the funding was not full.
By not looping, so you're gonna, you're gonna still have that same issue.
Still have the dead end issue.
Pipes on both streets.
Well, it's not so much a dead end on Depot, but it is on Martin. Because Depot goes up and goes down railroad.
Goes down railroad to Franklin.
So that's still looped, it's not a dead end, but this project, when it was orig, I think it, I think it had been discussed before, I even came here about going up Depot and crossing over and down Maple to connect to Martin.
I think it would help on, I think a couple of things was the, that culvert, I believe, up there, I think that would help the town side on that, get one major resolve, help this building, I think, with the water, it's extension of fire protection. The ideal would be the third issue, which would help with whatever's on Martin Road, so we can at least accomplish two of those with that. Martin Road, so we can at least accomplish two of those with that.
So there's consensus to bring the water up here from the commissioner?
Ideally, I think, ideally, I think the primary would be the water line going to the ten yards, but I know there's been some discussion that tie that in to the projects.
It was just a suggestion.
Yeah. Just trying to look for alternate ways to try to achieve, because if you took that funding and put it toward that line, it's still pretty short on. I was just looking at the number of borrowing attempts that you go for. So the issue is if we do, if it was to move forward on the Depot Street one and the project, Main Street, that didn't get funded, then was that, I think that, the project, if they take it on that, it was going to be, was going to be too large, and it turned out, ideally, I would prefer to do that line and just move on. Trying to weigh the hedge bet on that, I guess.
Always had to tell what people at town meeting are gonna do.
I miss definitely, if I was to pick it up and it gets up too high, I think it might scare people.
Thank you.
So that's how we kind of strategize that, so. Refresh my memory on the cost of the Main Street line?
So, the original proposal I think I put in was around 7.5 million, but that was a larger project, if we were just looking to get up to the highway department.
Well, ideally, you had that you want to go to the common, so you could tie in Northwest Main to get to that thing.
Yeah, originally, I mean, that project, we had put forth to SRF to try to get funding previously, which turned into a big headache for me, but we won't go down that road. But it was running up Main Street from basically from Franklin Street all the way up to Camp Meeting on Southwest Main.
Yeah.
And then going up Church Street, like up through the common, all the way up Church Street and around Northwest Main to finish a loop that wasn't completed in the past. There's a little gap, like 550 feet or so on Northwest Main that wasn't connected. So that would incorporate all of that for the 7.5 million, so if we scaled it back, it'd probably be closer to, well, and it depends on if you do the water and sewer at the same time, so if you're doing the water and sewer at the same time, you'd probably want to take care of any drainage issues and full overlay, so it adds up when you start adding the other things, but if you were talking just the water main up to the highway, it'd probably be between 2 and 3 million there.
7.5 million, I was running sewer up there too.
No, that didn't include sewer, that was just the water only, so.
Yeah, sewer's another one.
Had the sewer, it's another 1.5 too.
I think there's been quite a few breaks in that line.
Yeah, that's, the Main Street's from Franklin.
Yeah, that was about the big one, when Franklin came up. That, yeah, just trying to think of a strategy of accomplishing multiple things.
We had about four breaks.
But I think, we had three on the same day.
I think for the purpose of discussion, I think probably the best that would be to give this line, I think the YAPR fund is readily available, I think she can carry on that, but the person's office is the following, it seems to be the, talking about, the towns that utilize their budget, what they're talking about.
Before they can take it back.
Yeah.
They need to be obligated before December 2020.
Along with the thought process on doing Depot Street, it just utilized the other 40% of the building, which at some point, we're going to grow out of the space that we're in.
Is this the only building on Depot that has just one water service connection? We don't have backflow prevention, or do we?
Yeah, we do.
And this building has backflow prevention?
But your fire and your water's tied into the domestic.
Right, so typically you separate your water, your domestic from your fire service, and you have two separate lines coming in. This line has one common line that comes in and splits after the fact. So that's not a good practice typically, so.
So is this the only building on Depot Street that has that same practice? Will other properties benefit if this?
Did that new project up the street get multiples?
The birdhouse has, yeah, they ran a hole, because they didn't have sprinkler.
Up there now, so.
They didn't have, and they didn't have sprinkler before, so they ran a new separate line in for sprinkler and a separate line for services. So currently, this is the only one that I know of.
So the consensus is Depot Street project?
I think the town makes a lot of sense. I understand your issues with Main Street, but with that, it's also not me, bring borrowing anyways, so why wouldn't you borrow the additional 1.5 to do it?
Depot Street.
This is a complete project that you can actually do.
Yeah, with minimal borrowing, so you get pretty close to be.
But there's no borrowing unless they decide to go further, because it's not dead end if they get a little bit down Railroad. If you get, ideally, it would be at least one of the coffers, at least two Railroad Avenue, which is on the front towards right, I don't think we'd be able to go down Railroad Avenue and build a fund, but we'll see how the bids come in.
Because then the thought would be Railroad, the thought was going over to Maple and to Martin.
Right, but at some point, we would want to upgrade Railroad, but they just paid that not too long ago, so we don't want to go.
No, no.
Let's wait for the first one. Yeah.
Did you build soft costs into your budget estimate for engineering?
No. Doesn't, I talked to them about that, so.
We didn't finish our budget tonight for a few reasons, one, salary, and then some soft costs.
Right, so we had looked at putting soft costs into our operating budget to fund stuff like that, so, but when I tried to get the estimate for the engineering, the engineer was on vacation. So she gets back out, see if I can narrow that down.
So Matt, would you want to make a motion on this tonight? Incumber.
Is the incumbent working on, but there are various.
Can use it again. I think so, I mean, it makes sense, it's, you know, I mean, we wanted to get a big project done, this is a big project, you know, and I feel.
I think it benefits the town in every way.
And I feel better hearing from these guys, because it's kind of their system, so they know best where to send it.
Right.
I think it kind of helps everybody with us, and the town, since it's a joint. Eliminate the problem.
What will be left over if you, you know, encumber the whole thing? The whole remainder, or, so there is a little piece that I need for one more employee.
What is the, what's the balance?
$2,616,416.
What do you want, 50?
No, as long as you leave, as long as you leave 15, I think it'd take care of.
What's the right?
So why don't we just encumber 1.6 million and leave that 51,000 in there?
Yeah.
Miscellaneous stuff that, that keep popping up. So I would make a motion to encumber 1.6 million out of the YAPR funds for the purpose of upgrading, or put a line on Depot Street. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, asserting further discussion. Seeing is none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You come down and get asked, what would you do with 1.6 million, and bam, there it is.
I like these tweets. People that are ever going to get asked that question.
Don't expect to hear the question come again. All right, while we're still sitting, so I make a motion to close the Auburnville meeting with the selectmen at 8 o'clock.
Good night, guys. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you for coming in.
Well, thanks, Tim, for coming back on to help with the project. I've given up hope, so.
Given up hope.
We're not going to do anything big. No, I figured we're not going to do anything big, I finally conceded to it and then we
Tim's good for that.
Revitalized.
He's going to be like, has, is Mike giving up all hope? Now watch that.
We could encumber your hope for another project. Yeah, encumber my hope.
Yeah? That was Tim's hold my beer moment. All right, so.
Every runner has a second limb.
It's true. RMQ Designer Services for Public Buildings and BFCC Recommendations, possible votes?
Mr. Chairman, you have the chair here, so it'd be nice to hear from her, her committee's act.
How are you this evening?
I'm fine, thank you. Hope you people are too. That doesn't sound good.
Nagging cough.
He's a pitcher of health. Look at his Band-Aid and all.
I'm at least well fed, I'll at least say that, I know I'm at least well fed.
Wouldn't surely be in the, on earth, you should show your hand.
Man, fix my own thumb.
He decided to wrap up his infected finger so that nobody would know.
It wasn't infected, I cleaned it.
Yet.
Yeah.
I hope you can.
I have, actually.
This is not municipal business.
I have no throbbing pain in it, it seems to be doing okay. It's got some steri strips on it.
Keep it up.
Yeah.
On a pillow.
Just do this, I'll let you go.
Yeah, sure. Okay, the Building and Facilities Committee reviewed, I think it was six, five, maybe five, yeah, five, proposals, and individually, as I have, we went through the books and see how they lined up with the requirements that Matt had put together, and we chose three out of the five, Weston and Sampson, Context, and RGB, and no particular first, second, or third. Weston and Sampson probably had more votes, but not necessarily the top one. Some of us rated Weston and Sampson in a particular area, and others were like second for them, so, but I'm, you know, everybody seemed comfortable, and Linda made the motion, and it was second by, I think Fred, and Weston and Sampson, Context, and RGB. This was all contingent on being checked by Lisa and Matt, and I believe we talked today, and Weston and Sampson are contingent, very highly rated, and the other had some issues that Matt was fully aware of. Questions?
We're not doing interviews, but did the letters of recommendation come in?
So we called background checks today?
Yes.
So we called their listed references.
Yeah.
It's usually a red flag when somebody says, call my reference, and the references, they were terrible.
That was the best they had, though.
Yeah, and, you know, I, did you distribute the email? No?
No.
I think I can arrive at, I will hide the identity, I will vouch for the identity. At best, they were average, deliverables were slow, work plan was slow, project experienced frequent delays, new public work staff still finding issues after completion. Chair of Municipal Building Committee, equivalent of our BFCC, told him, they'd never hire them again. So that's from a project that was just completed. I knew this firm from the past, and I wasn't going to hold it against them, every professional services, these changes of personnel and they, they mess up and then they recover. These guys were bad 10 years ago, they don't seem to have turned the corner. I think that they are small and do fantastic work for their dedicated, you know, that major project that they've won, and that's their bread and butter, high visibility, high profile. So a couple of the buildings they've built in Rhode Island have been, or have designed in Rhode Island, are absolutely gorgeous, but they were also funded with Google money, so I'm referring to North Providence and the new public safety complex there, which, you know, money was no object, so it's like, let's just keep spending on it. We don't have that kind of luxury, we have to make sure that the design is something the town can afford, but still fits the town. So I think we'd recommend that RGB be removed from further discussion, and that the board consider the other two.
And the Building and Facilities is aware that the office usually checks on these people, because for each member of the Building and Facilities to be calling, we're a volunteer group, and we, we work hard at what we do.
I still think RGB was better than the two you didn't forward.
Yes.
So I don't, wouldn't change the order, just in terms of the final decision.
Get some good points on all of them, and so our recommendation is Weston and Sampson and Context, as far as references goes, that also, and RGB was also good, but the references did not correspond.
Did we get feedback from the first two?
So, I called on Context, and I got two really good interviews done with communities that have recently done projects. Context is more well-known for their work with fire stations, and they got very high marks, specifically, I don't have, one, people are really praised, giving a lot of praise, I don't mind calling out the towns, the town of Milton highly recommends Context. They just did three fire stations, one was a brand-new build, one was a rehab, and the other was a historic building that had a number of historic components that needed to be protected as part of the rehab. Context was able to successfully execute all three in series, because the town only had so much money to do the projects. But the Building and Facilities Committee Chairman there was, or Vice Chair, I believe he was, was very specific in saying that, Mike may be aware of this, I don't know if you guys are, but when a project is big enough, there is a whole process of, they're called sub-bids, so all the subcontractors are competitively bid, and the general contractor, if you pick them, has to use the lowest subcontract. And fire stations in particular have a number of specialty contractors that install certain items inside the building. So getting a good price for a project means successfully running the sub-bidder process, and Context was, was excellent at that, and got really high grades from the town of Milton for the way they conducted themselves. I'll let Lisa speak to Weston and Sampson, because I think she had three people call back.
I called three, only two called back, yeah, Mansfield, unfortunately, I did not get a call back from them. They did a DPW, they had a public, public safety complex, so unfortunately, I didn't get input from them on that. Middleboro DPW used them, they had no issues, they were highly recommended. The project managers, Jeff Alberti and Mike Richards, were excellent to work with, it was a very smooth process, they were more willing to do public presentations, they actually went to monthly meetings and attended town meeting as well for them, and then they also did Hockington DPW, again, highly recommended, and they were tremendous to work with, and nothing but good things to say about them all around.
They're a real blue chip firm, I've dealt with them on some projects over the years, one. I've dealt with them on some projects over the years, one of the main engineering firms. How about the pricing that, you didn't get into that, obviously, but any idea of one that will be...
I think they're going to be similar, Mr. Chairman. So, I'll just ramble right into my thoughts on it and let you guys, and then I can shut up and let you guys deliberate. One of our main focuses with this entire project has been able to get the highway barn design done very quickly so that we could go to fall town meeting with conceptual drawings, get a sense from town meeting on what to do next, and then at the following spring, we would actually have the approval of borrowing to conduct the project and final design plans. Weston and Sampson clearly has the capacity to hit those deadlines and get working right away. So that, it's really this upfront piece, so it's not that long to November, if you think about it, it's really, you know, seven full months, because then we have to put the stuff in the warrant, post it, with enough time for people to look at it. So, there's not a whole lot of time, and we're asking them to look at three different properties, because there may be some real estate discussion as part of this project as well. So, I'm not entirely sure that I feel comfortable recommending a small firm with a, with a small staff to try to tackle that problem. I'm intrigued, though, at this track record that Context has built around fire station and, and a building like this, which is already built, there's a lot of improvements have been made to the building, and now the question is seeing to the details of the way the interior is laid out. And that is where, you know, these recommendations were really, really positive in terms of Context's ability to do that. Now, we can't split the contract without the bidders agreeing that they would go along with doing that. You could withdraw it and reissue, but that's kind of a crazy process, too. So, I don't want to muddy the waters, but in my ideal world, if I could do it, I would do Weston and Sampson to do the highway barn, and I would consider Context for the other two consistently. But if I had to pick between the two, because I had no choice, the highway barn is the priority, that we have health concerns, we have asset management concerns, every, every good reason to address that building is, exists in the highest level of priority here in Douglas. So, we shouldn't brook any, any delay.
From a funding standpoint, the, we've already discussed that the highway barn with, with the water line going up potentially being around $30 million, what capacity do we have to explore a project beside that at the same time? Like, you talked, you just talked about splitting, looking at the highway barn for one company and looking at the other two projects. Are we in a position that we could actually do all three? Or do two?
I thought the original, I believe the original discussion around this, is we wanted to find a firm that was just going to be able to say, "The highway barn's done, we're going to take that same firm, roll into whatever the next project is, and the project after that."
I know, but even, even if it's a year or two apart, you've still got to consider the borrowing factor. Do you know what position, what position are we in to consider that, that's all. We could, that'll have a lot to do with, there's two different things that Matt said to us, is one company's larger and they clearly have the bandwidth in order to meet the timeline, which you need to do, but the attractiveness of the smaller company for retrofitting an existing building. So, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out where my thought process should be heading, that's why I'm asking that. Because if we can't afford to borrow for two or three projects, looking at the size of what we were estimating, the biggest needed project is, that's what started this whole That might help us in our final decision, that's all. I don't think we need to address the funding for the other two right now. It's the garage, it's the, the highway barn is the first, like you said. And then see where we are, with our new tax revenue coming in. Yep, no, and I agree with that, but the, if you're trying, again, as Matt identified, the larger company can meet the, he's not concerned about meeting the timeline, which we do, and me, because the smaller company can't handle it because of job, project load or something like that, then we're going to be in a problem to come fall. That's the only reason I bring it up, so I don't have any favoritism to either one of them. I think both could probably do the job very well. Ready for motion, maybe?
Well, I do encourage you to, you have books, or if you don't, I think some of our members returned books, and I think you maybe need to take a look at them.
Would you like a motion tonight, going on this?
I wouldn't delay too long. I mean, if, if you want to deliberate...
I don't think there's much point in deliberating. I don't know, you're with Weston and Sampson.
I have familiarity with Weston and Sampson, they've done some projects for Comcast, and they're fast, and they do good work.
They're a pretty big company. They have capabilities that they need to...
I think they, yeah, done some work pro bono even, I think, here.
They've, they've...
They've helped out.
Helped us think about the problem.
Yeah.
In preparation for this?
Yeah, so, when John and Adam went around and looked at recently constructed highways, you know, the common theme kept coming back, well, this is one firm that's done it all. So, Adam reached out and said, "Hey, how much does this stuff cost?" I mean, it's a fair and open question. Generally speaking, per square foot, what does it cost? "Oh, here's my spreadsheet with the per-square-foot, you know, estimates." And I wouldn't hold them to that, but it was still useful to have it all set up and be able to experiment with different numbers to kind of see where the ballpark figures would be. And we'd have to revise those numbers today based on current construction costs. But I think it was good to see the system and what parts of the building cost more per square foot versus other parts. And so, cold storage is obvious, right? But then there are still common spaces versus, you know, office space and bathroom space, and there's, the way you configure the building will have a significant impact on its cost. That's kind of obvious, but I guess the way I would put it is, if we have an idea in mind that, of what we're willing to recommend to town meeting to borrow, you can back that into how much building you want to build and have assets in place for the future and not have to do this again for a very long time, which would be the goal for, because after all this economic activity, it may die down for a long time, and the revenue base may just hum along at the same level. So, you can't get too excited about it, because it's all going to get eaten up with inflation eventually, 20 years from now.
This helps stop their idea. So, are we obligated to them for a certain period of time? Are you signing the contract? That would be like a three-year contract?
Yes. And the, between some combination of building facilities, and my role as a day-to-day asset manager for the town, and your role as ultimate holders of those assets, you would prioritize what project will come next. It may be a small thing like the roof of this building and some of the detailed work that needs to be done there so the spec can be issued and the work can get started. Or it may be something headier. It'll all depend on how much money we have and what the priorities are.
So, we'd be obligating to use them for, if we do any of these buildings, to use them for...
We would have a contract with them.
But nothing compels us to do the project, obviously. Timing-wise, by the time we get through the process to use the highway barn, for an example, get the town meeting, and then it's going to go into, we've got to start borrowing in the spring or whatever, by the time that gets underway, we're going to eat up three years. The project gets underway before you start the second or third project at the same time. Looking at the second or third, not start it, but start designing and looking into it as second. The reason why I say that is, if you think that we're going to eat up to three years, it might make the decision easier, because now you have a three-year trial to find out that that company performs before you get into the second project. Things move so slow, trying to get things done, three years is going to be gone before the town.
The good thing is, with having a one single contract that we've sent out, now we won't have this built-in three-month delay to do...
Right.
Designer selection. Just roll on from one to the next. And if we have the money, they can assign more than one team to us to work on more than one project. Same thing.
So, do we feel comfortable, gentlemen, making a decision this evening? I think we could go forward.
If I could just make one more comment?
Sure.
The impression I got also reading through these, they're going to come in and kind of assess everything, not just the highway barn, but where everything fits in one into the other, as far as the needs of the community.
Yes.
Right, and part of the process that we started... And they did that better than the other firms, you think?
I'm not saying any specific, but all, the ones that were chosen, and the others too, I mean, they had some good points, but I, we agreed these were the three. They all, the house doctor mode is, that's what it's kind of about. And then, not only just picking one, one right now, which is the highway department, but looking at that and knowing what other projects are placed, you know, the fire station, because we did a, the Building and Facilities went, actually had cable following us, and we went to every facility, the police, the fire, and the highway, as to, and that's how we came up with what's really needed the most, which was the highway barn. It's in really rough shape.
I watched them, it was like your version of This Old House.
Well, anyhow, and that's, and Matt was the one that came up with the house doctor. So, that's how it came about, and not only just looking, yeah, the highway is in most need, but what else is needed and how does it fit in to, you know, each project? Whether we do them all or not, that's another story, you know? That depends on what the town can afford.
Thank you, Shirley.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think I move that we appoint a designer services company for the town, firm of Weston and Sampson.
The second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Review Audit Services RFP draft and possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, given the hour and where I am with this, I'm going to suggest that the following, that the Audit Committee schedule a meeting for next week. And I'm going to suggest Tuesday, because FinCom is already meeting on Tuesday. And at that meeting, we can present a draft RFQ, which I'm very nearly done with, because I don't know that any additional conversation here is, is going to be that helpful, really. The Audit Committee at this point is going to be the committee that governs this. And, but you will be ready to go after Tuesday, but if, if the RFQ is acceptable, it can be...
Yeah, this is already started the process of reaching that...
For their availability, I'm just waiting here back to...
Yeah, so I'm, I'm confident that's a pretty solid RFQ. Like I said, it's not my work product. On this one, because I don't want to get too close to it, I grabbed one. I have been very careful to find and replace the other town's name with the word Douglas to avoid that embarrassment of, but it was done by, you know, obviously, an attorney with procurement experience, so there's not really a need to worry about it too much. We will send it to Rich Bowen to look over the weekend, but I think you're going to be in great shape to put it, post it within the next week or two.
So, you're saying we run that committee jointly with the existing finance committee that they're...
No, they're going to give you three members.
Howard.
Howard, Heather, and...
The chairman.
Yeah. But maybe not concurrent, but half an hour before? I'm just make, trying to make life easy for you.
Life is easier for a lot, for a lot of us if that could be done right in Syria.
Yeah, so maybe Tuesday? Right, works for me. You good with it, Mike?
Oh, I'm fine.
Yep?
Yeah.
Awesome. Alan, you good? So, the discussion on compensation reform and possible votes.
So, you will have a finalized package for the warrant on comp reform on March 21st.
Okay.
What I thought I would go over tonight is where we stand with the project and where we stand with the budget. And the good news is, based on the compensation tables and the positioning of the employees that we've been over the last couple of weeks, I can present compensation reform as part of a balanced budget. So, it will not cause us any additional financial difficulty. And the department heads, I really want to compliment the department heads, because they held their expense budgets somewhere between 1% and 1.5% increase year over year, and that enabled us to not only keep police cruisers in the budget as an expense item, but also to do compensation reform, which also said and told, I've still got a couple of tweaks to make to it. I had asked to spend as much as a quarter million dollars on it. I'm comfortable with 210, 215,000, and the budget is able to absorb that. So, I think we're in a good spot to be able to do this. What is it going to entail? So, if you recall what this article looks like in the warrant, it's, it's basically, the Personnel Bylaw calls for these comp tables to be voted every year by town meeting and to disclose all the rates for all the grades and steps. And then place the individual positions, not employees, the positions on those tables. And what I will do for additional detail on the 21st is tell you where each employee is in terms of their step. So, we place them in the grade for purposes of the, setting up the tables, but we don't tell you what step individuals are, so... What I've given department heads the ability to do, if they felt strongly that they wanted to do it, is accelerate employees' position on the steps, based not only on the terms of longevity with the town, but the merit of their performance to date. So, you will, there will be some discussion or some attention drawn to the fact that we have some employees who may have only worked here a few years, but who will be at a higher step, because that's where we want to put them. I've got two or three more discussions to have tomorrow. But just so you have a sense of the process, the five of us that put together this package met with all of the department heads individually and went over the management compensation. Then we had them come back with all of the employees that they manage, and we met with every single employee affected by the program. So, it's a small town, we have the luxury of being that democratic, right? Small D democratic, and being able to have conversations with people about their salary, and I think, you know, at some risk to ourselves, because, you know, we're trying to do the best we can to be fair to everyone, and you, you miss things, you might have to adjust things, but at the end of the day, I think we looked everybody in the eye as a human being and as a person and as a colleague, and we're able to have this conversation. Many employees that have been here for a long time and may have been at the top step for a long time and not... for a long time but not received a raise other than the COLA will see some increases in the mid-teens, where those that we've recently hired may be in the single digits, low single digits, because we had already adjusted their position on the existing comp table to reflect where they were hired in a competitive marketplace. We have to try to keep up, Douglas has to try to keep up because it is going to get harder and harder and harder to recruit a lot of these specialty positions. So we're trying to take that in stride and put the town in a position where it can use COLA policy as your budget gets stronger, and it will get stronger in the next four, five years, use the COLA every year as a starting point, not an ending point in the budget. And that way you can keep your tables competitive and you probably, you know, other things held equal, you won't lose people over salary issues. Because that's, the best offense is a good defense in this particular case. So that's where we are with it. So what you will see probably well in advance of the 21st, but asking you to vote it on the 21st, because in the operation of the personnel bylaw, I may set these issues, but I cannot actually recommend them without the approval of the Select Board for town meeting. So you have to be engaged in this.
Okay. Okay, moving along.
I will say, I do feel like I'm flying in the dark a little bit, not seeing the spreadsheet at all during this process. I know there's been a fair amount of work in it, so if we could get that data well before the 21st, if we're expected to vote on it or amend it, that would be, I think, helpful.
I think after tomorrow, we'll be prepared to show the summary of it, not the town meeting warrant format of it, but the outcomes for individuals.
So we gave you two and a quarter, and you're at 210?
210, 215.
Okay. And how did we get?
That's, but that was the, that was just a goal, right? That's what I thought it might cost, because I had done some back-of-the-envelope math. That's not where we are with the budget. So in other words, while I had a target for the cost of the compensation reform program, I am simultaneously trying to balance the budget. So at the moment, and it's not, I don't think it's going to last long, I'm about $56,000 in the black. We got our BVT number, that'll get idging into my report here, but I'll, I'll say more about that after, during my report.
Okay. So, review warrant articles and possible votes. We have a good chunk of these. Do you have Matt, the noise still up there? The solar?
It's not solar. That's a, that's a mislabel.
Yeah, I know.
It's floodplain. Oh, Matt's gone.
Matt left.
Matt's dead. His name's up.
There he is.
Matt's back.
What up? Man of the...
My laptop dead.
Is it a Mac?
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Sorry. I just rejoined, so if you had a question for me, I apologize.
Yeah, so you're on with the warrant, so floodplain.
Thank you. So the floodplain bylaw was brought to our attention by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. These edits are being done by fourteen other communities in the Quinibodaw watershed. These edits are essentially have to happen for annual town meeting, and if they do not, we risk losing our townwide flood insurance. So these have been reviewed by town council. They have been reviewed by DCR on multiple occasions, including the latest feedback that I ever see stating that our bylaw was in full compliance with what they were asking for. Happy to answer any questions about it, but I'm very comfortable with the bylaw we presented.
Mr. Vice-Chair, can you step out and use the head? Can you run the meeting for a couple minutes?
Sure.
Thank you.
So in general, Matt, did you, are these things that you added to it or just subtracted from the existing bylaw?
Good question. So a lot of the definitions had to be updated, and you had to remove older definitions that were no longer valid in the DCR's template. We also had to remove some other items that were dated, including referencing the individual farm maps. But, yeah, there's a model template that we, that we pulled everything from and removed all of the old information. So it's a little bit of both, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Don't sit here digesting this, the whole thing. Is there anything that's overly restrictive to any applicants that would come forward?
I don't believe so. It's, it's the same special requirement for some of, that's already been there. We had, we didn't add any further restrictions that the template did not provide.
Anybody have any questions about this? Mr. Administrator, do we need to vote to approve each one of these warrant articles?
So this is a zoning bylaw amendment. So your formal step is to refer it to the planning board for their deliberation.
Does it then come back to us after they do that?
They can present their recommendation here to the Select Board or on the floor of town meeting, which is typically where they do it.
So it doesn't require anything by this board except referring it to planning?
Right. I mean, if you put it up, it's up in the warrant.
I guess I'll be looking for a motion to refer the floodplain bylaw to the planning board.
So moved?
Next.
Any discussion on this? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is for road acceptance for Cobblestone Lane and Meeting House Lane.
Yes, sir. This was brought to the Select Board back in, for a fall town meeting in 2022. We, the general bylaw states that the road acceptance has to be brought to the Select Board's attention prior to October 1st and then considered for spring town meeting warrant. At the time, we pitched it for fall town meeting, and this board directed us back to spring town meeting. So the developer had since hired an attorney, Attorney Henry Lane, to represent him in this matter. So we provided the planning board with the letter to have these two small cul-de-sacs, the remaining pieces of Stonegate subdivision accepted for town meeting. We have had this reviewed by Jeff Walsh of Grades of Engineering. They identified a few items that needed to be corrected, to which the developer did correct of the highway department, as well as myself and the building commissioner, who were all on site for the final sidewalk, felt that the roads were ready for public acceptance. There are still many other parts involved involving, you know, transfer arrangements and such, and Attorney Lane will be in touch with town council to make sure all those documents are received.
And I already asked this question, I just looked at the minutes and the permit, the meets and bounds are all in place for these roads.
Yes, sir. In fact, that's one of the items that was, there were a couple of bounds missing, and the, when Mr. Walsh first reviewed the subdivision, and those bounds had since been installed.
Right. Does this one also refer it back to planning board?
I don't think so.
No.
No, this is town meeting.
Do we need to vote?
Straight from you, the highway commissioners.
Just want to point out your passion for meets and bounds.
Yeah, point out my passion. No, point out my passion to saving 12,500 every time we have to vote it in to put it on the pre-existing accepted subdivision.
I don't need the lecture.
No, 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 I was just pointing out.
You opened up a can of worms.
Clarifying what was the motivation behind the meets and bounds.
I have a passion for planning. You have a passion for meets and bounds?
Those questions are out of bounds.
No, 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 the meets and bounds, it's financial responsibility.
There you go.
There's always the story behind the number, as somebody told me once. So do we need to take any type of vote on? Or we just read to know what's on the warrant?
Yeah, I think we can look at it once it's in its fancy warrant.
Mr. Chairman? Yes?
The question, the only question I have, and perhaps I'm not certain at this time, is if these should be two separate articles since they are two separate sections of the road. I picked them as one since they're part of one development, but I kind of left that decision up to the board to see if you wanted it to be two separate articles or one.
Two different, two different parties, right?
Is it two different parties?
Was it one?
Same parties, same development, just two.
Same party and development.
Cul-de-sacs is part of a larger picture.
I don't see any reason to separate it up to you.
You want me to channel the moderator right now? I will channel his voice and say, let's make this nice and efficient and do it all at once.
Right. They're anticipating.
Thank you.
All right, so if we have nothing else on that, we have, the next item is, Fire Department would like to request a warrant article for the town meeting to raise an appropriate 60,000 out of the ambulance receipts for appropriations to fund a new cruiser for the fire chief.
So in my packet, there's a decommissioning fund agreement. Is this in here by accident?
Yeah.
The SOLA decommissioning fund?
Uh, must be because...
I don't think it requires town meeting approval whatsoever.
I don't have it.
You do realize that Suzanne has possessed your desk and can make things like this happen by thinking about them?
I have never seen it.
Okay, so it's not really in the packet?
No, it isn't.
Can I go now?
They're going to look for your explanation.
Raise my hand.
I'm having trouble hearing the gentleman this evening because we're not speaking into the mics.
Because we turned to address you politely, however...
Is this better?
Could you please come up and explain this warrant article, please?
And which one is that?
Ambulance receipt, 60,000 for a cruiser.
Well, that was a request from the department head to place that on, I'm assuming, the annual town meeting. What I did, this is, this is new for us. Typically, the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation has been used to partially fund the ambulance department's expense budget and the ambulances. So, you know, I'll refer to the goal that Sleckman-Fitzpatrick had set for the special stabilization. Once you kind of divert from that process, then you run the risk of not having the funds available when you go to buy the ambulance, if that's the intention. So I did provide a worksheet. And it's in basically three parts. The first one shows the revenue by year, and it gives a trend. So year-to-date, we're at 317,873. That's as of 2/28 of what I have posted. In the second section, you'll see that we used for this year's operating budget, 377,950. That was a transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation. The operating budget voted for the ambulance is 556,833. So you'll see the town contributes money out of its general fund to help support the ambulance. So it's not a self-funding department. And there's been discussion over the years for that, and there's, you know, different views on that, but that's, this is where it is. And then the last section is the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation history. So we began the year with 731,918.04. We are currently at 317 with revenue, and we had a transfer in of 377,950. So as of, an unreconciled February 28th, we're at 671,841. We know that we're going to be using some money for the FY '24 budget. Currently, it's, you're over...
I'm trying to decide whether to keep it at 370 or put it at 385.
So you'll know that's going to be taken out as a transfer. You also know that you'll be looking at a couple ambulances because we bought them in FY '19 and FY '20. 100,000 was used from the earmark grant in the FY '20 purchase, but they, they cost 238,000 and 241,000. So you know that's going to happen. So I guess the, the question becomes, you know, how is the receipts reserved for appropriation fund utilized? And currently, we were just utilizing, now you're throwing another mix into that. So if you take another 60,000, you're delaying some of the, the planning that we had to use the funds for future ambulances.
So it's not as simple as just saying, we have this pool of money, let's buy a car?
No.
No. I've heard...
There's a story behind the numbers, I've heard.
So the 671, we're still going to take 370 out of that, so...
At least 370.
Assuming. So that'll bring us down to 301. So this fluctuates somewhere around.
Wait a minute now. Why would you double count the drawdown one year?
Well, the 670, you know, it's going to come into the, July 1st.
So you're going to carry 671 forward?
Mm-hmm. And then July 1st, it's immediately taken out.
Right, so, but it will be more than 671 because you're at 317 for eight months. So if, if those monthly averages hold, you will close the year at 475. And then from that, carry forward, which, let's call it, close to 810, we'll carry forward and we'll take, let's call it 385. You'll take 385 from me, 10. You'll have 430,000. And then, that you'll have a whole year to accrue whatever's billed out then.
I think the other point to that is, you're not funding, and this does not take into account health insurance costs or any other costs, you are not transferring enough to cover the operating cost of the ambulance either. Because just looking at this, and I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying, I just want that to be, that point to be made clear. Because you're, you're not transferring the full cost of the ambulance department.
Yeah, the public needs to understand two things. One, ambulance receipts does not cover the full cost of earning the ambulance service. However, it is a significant offset. So a lot of people like to compare, well, what would, what would we gain or lose by having an ambulance service with a private contract? You would lose the ability to raise all that revenue, it would cost you some money. So that's always the, the option, to look at those two different things. This is a, you know, fairly robust fund, but it needs to be carefully managed so that it, it should grow at least at the rate of the cost of the assets to be bought, so that as you accrue funds into it and, and carry more and more over every year, it's because you want to get to that next purchase. We are in a tough spot because frankly, a lot of the town's equipment started dying all at the same time, and the opportunities provided specifically from the earmark from the General Assembly made it possible to buy any, you know, two ambulances right in a row. The problem with that is it messes up your ability to time your purchases... The problem with that is it messes up your ability to time your purchases so that the account will accrue enough funds...
For the next...
To buy an ambulance and then sustain the ongoing operation of the ambulance department and still accrue each year enough to get started again for the next ambulance. So push comes to shove, like or not, however you want to say it, it boils down to this. You have to manage the asset so that you get to the point where they are separated.
You've got to figure out how to stagger.
So either one has to last longer than you anticipated, or you rotate things through really quickly and try to get trade-in value or something. There are different things we can do operationally, but you need to be at a point where they're spaced according to their useful life. And, you know, the chief isn't here to say it. I will tell you what my experience is. He has more experience than me, and I would say his view should carry more weight than mine. But I have bought a lot of ambulances at this point in my career, and they wear out, really, it's the, I don't want, want to hear conversation about mileage or even hours. What matters to me as an analyst is the number of calls, because that's what makes the machine work and people work in it. So in a town like Tiverton that had only two ambulances and they were very, very busy, and the community was 16,000, 17,000 people, an ambulance could be expected to last about five years. Before, it started to show real significance, wear and tear, and was no longer a reliable asset. So when we would rotate one out, we would put it in a garage, and that would be the reserve ambulance that only got trotted out if one of the two frontline pieces was taken out of service for some reason. In Douglas, you don't have that call volume, you're not putting, you may or may not be putting miles and hours on the machine, but it's just not working the same way as it would in a really busy community with an older population than Douglas is. So if we can make them last seven years, even six years, that tells you how you need to space things out. A full cycle would be, of two ambulances, would be 12 years as opposed to 10. That makes a big difference in how much you can accrue if you're rolling over $150,000, $170,000 a year, because those two years allow you to make up the cost of the next The only other thing, things that I would want to put on people's radar screen is the asset does have value as part of the formula for increasing the headcount in this department. So as we look for a transition plan, because when you, you're getting to that point where you may have almost 10,000 people soon, and 12,000 is reasonable to expect within 10 years or so, when you get to that point, you will no longer be able to maintain service delivery with your current staff. So there are grant programs out there that allow you to feather in your next round of employees. It gives you three or four years to, you start off with a lot of funding and it tails off, and you should be building your financial plan accordingly so that when the grant falls off, you have enough operating cash to sustain the headcount. You are rapidly approaching that point. This asset could be part of the funding stack that gets you through that transition. So in terms of prioritization, the use, prioritizing the use of funds, these other considerations have to be kept in mind and not just, you know, purchase of this asset or purchase of that asset, because I'd like to do it right now. That's my long-winded explanation for how I approach this, why I sometimes don't put some of these things in the operating budget. Our goal, I think we've discussed, in an ideal world, if the town could do it, you would expense police cruisers, fire department cruisers, ambulances, and quite possibly really the smaller range of pickups, the 250s and 350s that we might use for small jobs, because those are digestible expenses. And the use of the asset, the useful life may be five years or 10 years, right, max. So borrowing for them is silly, you pay a lot of interest for no good reason, and you would use your capital budget for the most expensive items. I think that's where we really want to be, is if it's disposable, it belongs in the operating budget.
The current, the way that we ended up purchasing them via one through a grant, and then the other one just regular purchase on the ambulances, back-to-back like that is not sustainable, at least for the town. I don't see it that way. We do have to stretch these out in between the purchases of, you know, one ambulance, put one into reserve, wait a couple of years for that fund to build back up, but to put on for two to come out of this next year is, if I'm still...
That's not what this proposal is just so...
Yeah, no, this was...
The proposal is $60,000 for a cruiser.
Yeah, no, the, and the reason, the only reason why the second ambulance was purchased so closely is because of the $100,000 earmark grant. Had that not happened, I don't think it would have been, you know, purchased that way.
I think we ended up in some pressure at the end to hurry up and spend it or...
We did, we had a timeframe.
Yeah, take her, get her done.
You know, and, and that's why the funding was from free cash, and we closed articles to, to get that done. If you look previous to that, you know, we had, going back, and I, one of them was purchased from the receipts reserved for appropriation, the second was purchased from stabilization. We kind of borrowed from ourselves, and then when we were funding more from the receipts reserved for appropriation for the expense account, any residual on the, on the account that closed in the free cash, we were transferring back to stabilization. But it got to a point where we were funding more out of the operating budget for the department, so there was, the source of funding was no longer purely receipts reserved for appropriation. So we, we didn't even pay the stabilization account back in full for that second purchase.
So based on the understanding that, you know, moving forward, we want to use some of the ambulance receipts towards the acquisition of new ambulances, if this manages to go through a town meeting via an article or however it does, how does that hinder that process moving forward? Or does it set back counter on not being able to do either one of those with the expenditure of $60,000?
Because it's not ambulance-related.
Well, I don't think it necessarily has to be...
Well, it could be, but you are reducing the accrual by $60,000, starting off with a lower base.
And you're starting a dangerous precedence. Going back to what Gene said about the stabilization account, that was my argument through the whole process. If you do anything other than what it was intended for, you defeat the process. And because these two ambulances are back-to-back, it's coming a challenge to try to spread them out the way you need to spread them out to properly stagger. That's going to, it'll probably take a couple rotations before you can get to that point.
And the, and again, the other piece to that, I'm not merely presenting the facts so you can make an informed decision, I'm not trying to argue one point to the other. But the other piece to that is truly operational. What are we transferring to cover the operational cost of the, of the ambulance department? You know, and, and where does that variance project out in the future? And understanding that this fund, you know, should you hire headcount, does not even cover the health insurance. This is truly just the salary and expense portion. And...
This is a bucket of money right there.
It's not a bucket of money.
Wow, it's a bucket of found money. You really want to commit all the sins at once?
No, no, but it's, it's a pool of money you've given them. Right? And it's got a specific purpose that we've used. Now, what we're asking for now is to deviate from what we've done with this fund in order to meet a specific need that's been identified a couple times by a department head.
Correct.
So if we don't do it this way, what are the other options?
Free cash would be an option. You could look to the operating, you know, the operating fund to see whether or not it can be, you know, supported within, similar to the cruisers.
My concern with, with this fund and the ambulance is because you're only one year apart on the ambulance, it's a hypothetical situation. Say, say the life of the ambulance is five years, and we're trying to get a five-year separation between the two ambulances, you might be able to make one of them go to seven years, and you get one done in five years, and one, so you're going to do one midpoint, and you're going to have to do that a couple times in order to get your proper separation of, of the two purchases for them to make the stabilization account work. So it's going to be challenged at the, at the beginning.
Yeah, so we're, so we're all on the same page. If, let's say an ambulance has seven years, right, so you need to replace one every three and a half. That's the stagger you're looking for, is to buy one every three and a half years, because then the one you buy in year one is going to last till year seven, then the other one is a year three and a half.
So you're either going to buy one prematurely or try to get one to last longer than you anticipate.
And I'm old-fashioned, and I think you try to make one last longer, because it's the devil you know.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the other thing is, anything you purchase out of here should be for the ambulance department. And then that, again, the ambulance serves the ambulance department. When you get a cruiser, I think it's more of a mixed use, you know, because you're serving both departments, both the fire and the ambulance. Both are emergency services, but, you know, the, the revenue is generated by the ambulance going out.
To be fair, most of our call, many of our calls, the majority of our calls are ambulance calls, so it's a good point, but I just want to qualify it by saying, you know, increasingly many of our calls are ambulance calls, and the equipment that is being suggested that be put on the cruisers is your first-in bag and other things that you need to, to respond to an emergency medical call.
So it's almost like a fly car.
Well, yeah, but it's just, your department is somewhat unique, not totally unique, but somewhat unique in that both the chief and assistant chief are paramedics, so they can respond to an ambulance scene with the cruiser and be the third person or fourth person on the scene, rendering assistance, but they don't need to go to the hospital for the transport. But the equipment they would carry would still be useful, and their presence as paramedics would be useful.
So I'm not suggesting this is not needed. I'm merely saying that maybe not funded in this way, and that there may be a different funding source that may be more appropriate.
That's where I'm at with it, I'll tell you that.
Has that, an alternate funding source been recommended to the department head?
We, I just got this yesterday, so...
So to parse it out, I mean, it, I don't think it made the grade at capital. So capital is the, is free cash. That's our really only source right now, is free cash for capital spending. So it doesn't make the grade there. It didn't, it was put on the ARPA list and didn't get funded there because there were other things that were prioritized by this board. It's not in the operating budget because I don't have room for it. If I could, if I could make it happen, if I could get $60,000 back into this budget, I would try. I can tell you, knowing the moves I've made, I, I don't see it. So this is actually the last best chance, because it's a, it's a fund that's set aside specifically for that service. So if it doesn't cope here, then it will have to go back into the funding cycle again next year with requests.
How vital is it that we do it now?
So I'm, I just went through, it didn't make the grade in all those other funding...
Right, I'm talking to you, asking you.
The reluctance you're seeing is, you know, I have a professional chief who's not here to make the case for something that he's asked for. So I think there's a point where, where my role ends and his begins, and I want to be respectful of that. I want him to be able to configure his fleet the way he thinks is appropriate. He has to keep an open mind to the feedback he gets from, from me and from Gene and from this board on priorities and these other considerations of staff and anything else. You know, when I, when I look at the challenges that we face as a town and as a Commonwealth, right, being able to staff at a proper level, pay that staff competitively so they stay with you, and provide them with the resources they need to do their job every single day, IV pumps, cardiac monitors, up-to-date hose testing, up-to-date breathing apparatus, those are the priorities first and foremost. And until you say, I have fully locked in all the funding sources I would ever need to fully guarantee the safety of our firefighters when they go on the scene, and to make it easier for them to do their job, make the paramedic's job at the highest level of medical care that they are allowed to deliver in a medical direction, once you've achieved that, you can start talking about other things that you want to do. That's my frame.
Yeah.
So when the department head asks me, that's how I frame my answer back. It may not be that explicit, but that is what modulates my response. Is there a demonstrable need for the cruiser? Yes. Is it as higher priority as some of the other issues facing the town as a whole and the department in particular? In my opinion, no, and I think, I think the record stands for itself. The other, the capital committee, the board, Sleckman, you have chosen not to fund it either.
A lot of my comments and concerns are generated from the capital process in which I'm involved in all the time. It's extremely challenging trying to come up with a list that, that makes sense for the town as a whole. When I see something like this, because President's tied right into the special stabilization account, in the role of, on being on capital, what I'm trying to do is look at the big things that are going to be a hindrance to the capital process, big purchases. Fire truck was, was a huge one, that was $750,000. You get 1.1 million, you put that with, with the 360 for the chapter 90 funds, you're at $1,600,000. Not much left over. So when you do that every five years, it wipes out the whole capital process, so that, that was the driving force behind the special stabilization account. What I'm concerned about is creating another problem with the ambulance. You have a funding source in place that will take care of that. As nice as it was to get the $100,000, and I had this conversation with Gene, that also come with repercussions, now we've got to figure, figure out how do we get onto the sta, the staggering portion of it, and we have to make sure we have funds in there, otherwise it's going to just take away from the free cash, which ultimately funds the capital projects. I just want to say that because there was, I don't have any desire to, to fund it or not fund it, it's just, I'm just looking at it from a whole budget process, as to how we do these different projects. And for Matt's defense, it's kind of awkward position for him, because he's trying to figure out his budget to make that decision, that's, that's more for the department head to come in here and explain to us what the, how strong of a need that is.
There's also something to be said about redirecting the focus if he really feels strongly about it and wants to go to town meeting, capital process notwithstanding, $60,000 out of free cash, put that up there on the down vote, and democracy wins.
I mean, either funding source will be used, it's going to end up at free at town meeting for them to decide how to fund it, you know, based off how we ask for it.
Well, I guess both deviate from standard practice, so...
So, so you would put it up, and I just, there's only a question so I understand the process. You would, you're suggesting putting it up as a warrant article and bypassing the capital process as a separate standalone for the free cash?
As opposed, as opposed to grabbing it from the ambulance reserve receipts fund? It's an option.
Oh, it's an option, just understanding it, because you, you do have a bylaw in place for the capital process, you're, I'm hoping to possibly have 1.1 million, and we've already almost 1.3 million? So we have to figure out how to reduce that to start with. This is the challenge in the capital process, as to try to how to do it, that's all.
I think there seems to be a consensus that we want to keep the ambulance fund separate for funding future purchases of ambulance and not, as you pointed out, the periodic purchase.
I know at one point in time when we had started talking about cruisers, and we started replacing the police department's cruisers, like trying to get the fire department cruiser into a cycle or cadence or part of the operational budget when we start ordering those.
Yeah, it kind of cuts both ways, and sometimes I feel like I'm speaking out of both sides of my mouth on it.
That's sort of an issue, though.
You know, you would, you would get perhaps a better per-unit price if you were ordering more at a time.
Yep.
In terms of our budget, though, because the police department rejuvenates its fleet on a, what, a four-year basis and then they take two years off. If you put the fire cruisers in those years, the budget would be nice and leveled. And all I've ever done is preach leveling this budget so that we can just keep plugging away on it every year and still get the things we need. So therein lies the rub, right? So in a way, we missed the opportunity for the last two or three years to buy fire cruisers, but we, we didn't have the money.
And the last two or three years, you could do the comp reform and contract reform and things like that, so.
Yeah, I can clearly show you that over the last three years, what we've spent money on have in fact largely represented fire department and police department priorities, which were primarily compensation and rank. Those things cost money and that's what absorbed a fair amount of the new resources released from the override and from our other practices.
And as well as the school.
And the, but there's no doubt, right? The schools at BVT and Norfolk.
All those things that are.
In the large increases in the school bus transportation contract, that's where a lot of the money went. That, that's where it all goes.
So I guess for me, if you were going to treat this as an operating expense and it's a consumable item, then it needs to go into the operating budget. The minute you, you treat it as a capital, I think it's a dangerous precedence to have it as a standalone article because that invites every department that doesn't get on the capital list for that particular year to say, okay, I'm going to put an article in and see if town meeting votes it up or down. So I think, you know, if you were to argue that it's, it's operating and Matt felt comfortable using free cash as another funding source for the operating budget and he felt strongly that it should be there, then I would support that, I guess. But the minute you say it's capital and put it as a standalone, I'm not as comfortable there because, you know, what's to prevent any other department by saying, you know what, it didn't get funded in capital? I'm just going to submit an article.
I mean, I would more see it as an operating expense. This is something that's going to come up every probably four or five years. I mean, they're not going to get, a fire chief's cruiser is not going to wear out as fast as a police cruiser is. You know, it's not on the road as much, it's not idling as much, it's not doing as much. But there should be a cadence that we start to layer in there saying, all right, every six years, we're putting a new, you know, fire cruiser or, you know, fire chief's cruiser up to the station up there.
Capital says if it lasts more than five years and it costs more than 10,000, it belongs there.
So that's where it should go.
It is just how the bylaw, bylaw works.
So that's, that's the struggle, you know, that's.
So, because I mean, in theory, it shouldn't be, it's just how my mind works.
Yeah, we say that, but that's not what we do. I mean, police cruisers are more than 10,000 bucks.
But we're saying that they're, they're not going to last more than five years. You know, they're flipping.
It's the life of the asset.
Yeah. It has to be, you know.
So if we put it on a five-year cadence for replacement, that would fall outside of the statute.
I thought that's what you were saying.
Yeah.
I thought he was at six or seven. I'm sorry.
Like, I was just saying, meaningful life.
But if you make it five, so it's not a capital item.
Yeah, so if we do every five years into there, I'm sorry, I'm just messing everything up. If we looked at it as every five years, there was a replacement cruiser happening, we could make it part of the operating budget, take it outside of the capital process and avoid department heads from trying to do a one-off like this, I think is the easiest way to look at it.
My impression, that's the, that's the direction in which we're going. We just aren't able to be there immediately right yet. And that's where the frustration comes from, as far as the standalone item. That's why I was adamant about making the adult social bus go through it, not to be difficult, just to maintain what we're supposed to be doing. It was just about process, so I'm in agreement that it should be in, in the operating budget because then it's no longer a topic that we have to keep going all the way back and forth.
No, I agree with you. I mean, I think the only issue that we've run into and it happens a lot at the fire department is we seem to end up in the one-offs a lot. You know, previously, it was because of lack of budgeting that we had and our old ambulances were 12 and 14 years old before we replaced them. So I don't want to get back into that cadence either.
I just, sometimes I feel like I need to be the historian.
Yeah.
The town of Douglas had started its full-time, 24/7 ambulance and fire service in 2017.
Yep.
And it is just the beginning of 2023. And it has taken this time to grow the expense budget from the paltry sum that it got when it was a call department up to enough to almost, almost run it as a full-time department.
Growing pains.
And so, you know, it, it's called rising expectations, right? We don't have these conversations or this awkwardness when there's no money. It's only when there's more and more resources becoming available that people start to clamor for their, their opportunity to do things that they've held back for a long time. It's very understandable professionally and emotionally and all the rest of it, but it doesn't change the fact that we simply don't grow fast enough to support really big chunks of new spending in one year. We have to be measured.
Yeah, no, understood. And it wasn't a, I wasn't trying to say it in a disparaging way.
No, but I think what, where your plan works is, goes back to what I was saying, but if the police are, are in year A, B, C, D, and then the fire cruiser comes in the year E.
Yep.
It won't be due again until the next year E, right? So you won't have conflict. You may not get the benefit of group, you know, volume purchase, but you will have the benefit of smoothing out the budget.
Smoothing out the rotation. Make the budget process easy.
I, I think as we go along, it does appear to me, just from what I'm watching, that we're getting some separation between the models that are, make good police cruisers from those models that may be suitable for a fire cruiser, just because the amount of equipment that goes in and other considerations. You know, we, we were buying Durangos for, for police cruisers and they're way too small for, for fire, so.
They're too small if you get arrested, those two, that backs seats time.
And you would know that, how?
Hearsay.
Hearsay. Hearsay to you.
Yeah, the stuff here is all frustrating for everybody because, frustration for everybody because each person that comes up, they're passionate about what their particular needs.
Absolutely.
But we only have so much to go around and that's the frustrating part for them as well as us because it's not even to be in this position that we're in.
It, it makes it hard, like especially when you, every department has multiple priorities that are sitting out there. And when you ask them to stack rank them, they're all going to come in and say they're all a P1. They're all like.
Sat through capital.
I can imagine. You know, and I mean, I think it wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt to let the chief come in and plead his case. You know, I mean, at least give him the respect to sit in front of the board and, and explain why he wants to do what he wants to do and hear out Gene's point of view, which I understand, appreciate and respect immensely, Gene. So thank you. But I don't think.
What I don't want to do is mislead him.
No, I don't want to mis.
I don't think that's fair. Pretty in-depth conversation.
Or set him up to fail.
Right. I think that just makes it worse. I don't have, I'm not opposed to hearing from him, I'm just forwarding you that I don't want to, like, Tim just set, set him up for failure.
Nope, not at all.
I don't think that's a good thing to do to anyone.
No, it's not fair to do to anyone. And I mean, if he's, the biggest thing that you look at with anything is that if you're falling under scrutiny under the board of selectmen, that scrutiny is going to be exponentially larger at town meeting. So it, it never hurts to plead your case first and, and see where it goes.
And this is really just brought to my attention this week. This wasn't, you know, brought forward before. I know it, he tried to seek funding from other avenues, but to put it as a standalone, I haven't had a conversation with the chief and the assistant chief yet either. I will, out of courtesy, forward this report to him so he knows what I presented to the town, to the board of selectmen this evening. But it's definitely not meant to hurt the process. It's really meant to give you information so that we can make, I don't like anything as a one-off. I just, it's not my style. You need to figure out what we want to do and how we want to get there and the best way to get there. And I'm very concerned, you know, like I said, if you treat it as a capital, very concerned that you're opening a precedence that shouldn't be opened.
That's fair.
Okay.
Does anybody have any objections to we carry this over to the next meeting and at least give them a chance to present it to us as well? So everybody deserves their day in court, right, Gene?
Oh, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I think, I think we've sort of reached a consensus here. Do it. All right, are we done reviewing warrant articles?
No. We have another one.
All right, moving on.
This is actually an article?
That's what. No, then.
This is not really an article.
No, the next one will be part, we were also informed that the ambulance salary account is going to need a transfer at the special town meeting. I handled that as part of a budgetary transfer. I'll talk with the chief and the assistant chief about this. And typically what happens is this comes from available funds. The town meeting has to transfer money in at the, because the tax rate's already set, so it's a transfer article. Again, the proposed funding source was 25,000 from receipts reserve appropriation account, so that impacts this. So I'll go back and I say, I'll ask them, you know, do you have any money in your either expense account, either fire or ambulance? Can that help fund the salaries, you know, or is there money in the salaries in the fire department? Can that help fund it as opposed to taking it as a transfer from receipts reserve appropriation? So I'll have that conversation with them and so that will be part of the special town meeting budgetary adjustment. And we'll figure out the funding source from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And I just want to go on record that Tim said found money, just saying.
No.
No, I believe he said bucket of money.
And if you notice that Kevin went that way and I went this way.
Yeah. I saw the lightning coming.
I mean, colloquial language be damned, I guess.
You know I'm only teasing, right?
I do.
Yeah, okay.
I do. As am I.
You may be due for another one of those every dollar has a story lectures, Tim.
No.
No?
Not tonight.
I still remember mine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. All right. Anything else in the warrant articles or are we good?
No, that's a, not a minute.
Meeting minutes, impossible votes.
Correct that 235, remember? 235,000. That was in executive.
I'm looking for that typo that you identified.
Well, that was only executive session though that it came up, right?
Was it on the 20th or the other one?
It was, came up tonight, but.
Or the 17th, or maybe the 3rd or the 19th or the, who are you laughing at? I've had a really long wait.
You got Tourette's with dates.
I'm just going to keep throwing out dates until you pick mine.
You know, that day.
While Tim's searching, I'd like to make sure we approve the executive session, December 20th, 2022, and retain.
225, but on the minutes of the 17th, second back page, the number 10. Here, mark 225 of the town's ARPA funds.
Oh, I see, yeah, the 20 minute, 50 second word.
Yeah. Right here.
Well, we got more money in that, but we only use the 25,000. Good job.
So there's a motion, anybody care to second it?
I'll second the December 20th, retaining all, are we retaining all?
Yes. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the January 3 regular session minutes.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. We go move into the other minutes. On the number 2 on here, there was a 90 days. Supposed to schedule them.
Yeah, what's going on with that?
Well, it says 90 days, 90 days would be this month, should be probably the next meeting, maybe.
Yeah. Good catch, Mike.
It's only because hell, maybe we read for the.
Good job. Got it back. Went by accident.
Mentoring by accident.
Yeah.
By the most interesting selectman in the world.
Too humble. Did we do January 3? Executive session?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve the January 3, 2023 executive session minutes, retaining all.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will make a motion that we approve the January 17, 2023 minutes with an amendment to the bulleted item number 10 indicating 225,000.
At the 20 minute, 50 second time period.
Yes. Known to many as the Bonin Transparency Act.
Okay.
BTA, sorry.
Motion, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing is none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Like to make a request of the minute taker that they make reference to the Bonin Transparency Act.
They do every time they write it.
Oh, Stephanie does?
I am actually very proud of that. I think that's a very important and helpful tool. You got to toot the old horn button.
I would like to see that brought up at town meeting, like acknowledgement of the Bonin Transparency Act at town meeting.
Maybe at my retirement party, but.
Do you want to please hold her on the warrant?
Yeah, I think so. I think it would make sense.
All right, let's go.
All right, moving on. Your report's there.
I'll be brief. Because I think we've covered a lot of it already. So I'm, in the next week, I'll be in a position now to completely resolve the budget, compensation reform proposal and whatever lingering loose ends we have around the capital budget. Because, because of resolving the operational budget, we can resolve the capital budget. Late this afternoon, we got a preliminary budget figure from BBT, which was a dollar amount that was a larger percentage increase than I had in my budget forecast, but not so large as to derail the process necessarily. So as we sit here tonight, I still have some things to work on around the comp reform issue. And if I have funds left in the black before balancing the budget, I will bring them back into highway because I took quite a bit out of highway expenses to get to the point. Specifically, I would put money back into tree warden and money back into snow and ice. So we would continue to gradually increase our snow and ice budget on the pace that we said we would. we said we were committed to until we get to a reasonable number. So I anticipate being able to release that before the end of the week or early next week and with a budget message and basically be able to divorce myself from the day-to-day of it and be presenting it. The, we just got the written notice from highway department, was it this morning? So we didn't turn it around very quick, but I, I need to put both the select board and finance committee on notice that we are now deficit spending snow and ice. That will affect the total amount of free cash that we, we have. Right now, it's a small amount, so knock on wood and hope that we don't get any more snow or ice.
It's full warning rates of capital.
I thought with this weather that we actually would be under.
It's just not that much. Well, you know, ice storms are expensive, snowstorms are not. So the more times they have to go out and throw salves up the ground, it's five, six times, it's expensive storm. And the price of salt went up this year, so, you know, every time they go on a run, it's, you know, a $9,000, $10,000 expenditure, so each time they put salt in.
Maybe we should use a term other than storm or weather incident or something like that for the...
So there are a couple of pressing matters that are, that are beginning to show up. I'm not even entirely sure how to do this. The warm winter weather has undermined the basic assumptions of the energy market, which had planned in really large increases in the cost of electricity driven by large demand for natural gas. That has not materialized anywhere across the United States this year. So we now have this very interesting time. So our, our energy advisor has been burning up the phone wire to my office, saying now is the time, you need to renew your electricity bulk purchase within a window of time that could be only four...
Along with all the other communities.
No, that's the aggregation program. This is the Douglas municipal power purchase.
Okay.
So this is for the water, wastewater plants and all of our buildings. We have been absolutely killing it because we bought power at a time when it was very cheap on a five-year forward contract. We are coming to the end of year four of the forward contract. So we have one year left at the rates that we purchased four years ago, but we don't, may not want to wait a year before we renew the contract or go out to bid again. So I, we may be asked to, you know, make some really snap decisions. In the past, I have preferred to go with the longer term if we can and get town meeting to approve the contracts. We may not be have that ability. So if I can do what I'm allowed to do under the procurement law and purchase competitively for the maximum amount of time allowed under the procurement laws, that's what I'll do, just so you know. But I've been very worried, there's another town nearby that waited and waited and thought they were going to get another better price point around the corner, and then the corner came around and the price was way up high. And they're not that far away from us and they really got hit hard in the budget. They had plenty of resources to meet the challenge, so it wasn't news. But just in terms of management of a budget, it was a huge shock to them, you know, caused them some distress to fix it. So we want to avoid that. We had a very important meeting today. We're starting to talk about the town's bond rating and what we can anticipate, the bond rating being if we were to borrow within the next years, based on the last three years of performance since we last issued general obligation debt. And the recommendation that we are likely to bring to the select board, Gene and I and Cheryl, is to switch from Moody's to Standard and Poor's, which has been a common thing with municipalities. Standard and Poor's several years ago redid their scoring system. A lot of towns were suddenly bumped up to AAA, so there were some thoughts, well, maybe those reforms weren't credible, right? They made it too easy to borrow.
Yeah.
The time has proven that those were actually good decisions. Moody's has not wanted to change, they're very conservative. So there's been any number of towns in really good financial standing that have been unable to improve their bond rating despite their, their strong performance because the score card just won't give it to them. So today, we did review the Standard and Poor's scorecard and the, we have an initial preliminary view of our, of Unibank, which is our financial consultant, which I won't share publicly because it wasn't designed to be shared publicly, but it's a stronger rating that we enjoy presently from Moody's. There are opportunities in this report for the town over the next year, year and a half to actually improve its score. If there are certain things we need to do. We need to put in place financial policies and then demonstrate that we are in compliance with best practices in those financial policies. You have some that you did in 2018, and then some that were done earlier around the 2012 timeframe, but a lot of them need to be updated. We also, I mean, the, the analyst from Unibank was using a, a very conservative approach to our economic strength as a community, our location between Western and Providence. It may be that with some additional economic activity, we could approve our economy score. So economy and management, which is the policy, together account for 50% of the Standard and Poor's rating card. So it's worthy. So this is what people always wonder, so I, I'm going to go to my notes to make sure I don't misspeak. Because I think a lot of people want to talk about the bond rating of their community as some kind of enormous financial benefit, and this is why we have to, you know, we squeeze the lemon so hard because we just want to keep that rating. Right now, the typical interest rate being charged for debt of all ratings is right around 4.5%.
What maturity?
20 years. But the, the true interest cost is lower if you're rated higher. So on a 20-year mature, if you're a double A plus in Standard and Poor's, you're really looking at a true interest rate around 3.9%. And a double A3 would be about, which is what we are right now, under Moody's, it'd be about 4.1%. So whatever that translates into, I always get the zeros wrong. I think that's, 0.6% would be what, 600 basis points?
Yeah.
600 basis difference if you can improve your bond rating. Which, so it makes it worth it. On a 20-year note, per 30, 40, you know, 30, call it 30 million, it would have an impact. So it's a worthy goal for the town to set, is to do everything it can to improve its bond rating in this particular instance because of what's going on in the market. So we have an inverted curve right now, where short-term interest rates are very high, long-term interest rates are lower.
If we bond for the mega improvements that we're contemplating, the revenue sources will probably be there at that time, so that may balance it off so we don't shock the rating agencies. Is that what you're thinking potentially that...
Yes, so, so Gene started thinking about some strategies and I think it's going to be an interesting package that we're able to put together. Maybe somewhat counterintuitive, but it may actually work to our advantage. I just want to make sure we maintain a balance of budget flexibility, so if you decide, there's this mechanism I wasn't aware of until, until today, which, and maybe it's my own ignorance, but you can vote the debt and put it into your operating budget and raise the funds necessary to service your debt in the operating budget, but not lose the option to exclude it if you need to. Which I wasn't aware of. I thought it was black or white, you either excluded it or you don't.
Chapter 40, you say, in the general law?
So there may be a way, while, when, when our levity capacity expands very rapidly because of economic development, to soak up that additional capacity by putting the note into the operating budget. And the rating agencies apparently really like that. They like to see that.
Pay it off.
Because you're paying it off.
Yeah.
So, but that, that's, that's the path we're on. Lots of questions, not as many answers, but that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
How did raise the aggregate company and visiting the MMA exhibit hall, I did speak with that gentleman. He thinks he's coming to see us soon. Has he been...
John O'Rourke?
Yes. Good Irish guy.
It's O'Rourke.
Yeah.
I haven't heard.
You haven't heard from him?
So he does do the circuit?
Yeah.
He comes around? I don't know where we're going out to bid again.
He was at the Comanche Plymouth, I think. It might have been.
Could be.
Years ago. Our chamber of commerce maybe was...
I actually think that's where it comes out of.
Plymouth Plymouth.
Chamber.
He had indicated that we were going to act quickly on something because, as you had mentioned, the market looked like an opportune time, so...
Yeah, if you're a bulk purchaser and you have a big town, now you want to go now.
Just to extend the meeting, I'll throw that out there.
Thanks, Tim. It's awesome.
Is there anything else?
No.
Tim would be looking for one of your motions.
We're doing that?
We're doing that.
All right, I'm making a motion that we move into executive session for the purposes of contract negotiation, then to leave executive session for the purpose of adjournment.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Put the back of your guy.
Vote aye.
Wards, aye.
Davis, aye.